Commissioners, are there any items other than those on the published agenda that you'd like to discuss at the briefing meeting today?
Chair, are we able to discuss the resolution sent to us from the Buncombe County Schools?
Yes, let's add that to the agenda. Once we get to the other two items. We do need to adjourn by 4:30 for a closed session to review personnel matter, so I think we'll be able to get that done. Anything else? Okay, great, well, let's move on to our first. Oh, and are there any questions about any other items on the regular meeting agenda this evening? Okay, then let's go to our first item, which is an update on the Community Reparations Commission. And Assistant County Manager DK Wesley is here to get us started on this.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
DK Wesley, I'm not going to be with you but a brief minute. I'm going to introduce to you Christine Edwards from Civility Localized. She's going to bring forward a presentation specifically focused on the immediate recommendation that was put forward by the Community Reparations Commission on December 5th. She is with us virtually. Also joining in the event you have questions is our Chair of the Community Reparations Commission and our Vice Chair. So we'll get Christine queued up.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, DK, for having me here this afternoon. I just want to make sure you all can see me and hear me, okay? All right, perfect. So I'm happy to be joining you virtually. I did get a chance to talk to you all, I think it was November of last year, so it's good to have these periodic updates. If I could get screen share capabilities, then I will go ahead and share our update. And so this presentation should be fairly brief, and I'm glad that we have our Chair and the Vice Chair in the room as well to just sort of provide some additional information and to answer any questions that you all have. All right, I'm going to start sharing my screen. Okay, so this short presentation is going to detail some of the work that the Community Reparations Commission has done in regard to the immediate recommendation to stop the harm. And so this presentation is the Buncombe County and City of Asheville Response Plan. So the key takeaways today are, on December 5th, the Community Reparations Commission passed an immediate recommendation to end further harm by ceasing repetition of institutional processes that lead to racially disparate outcomes. That recommendation included a call for the county and city to conduct an official audit to ensure compliance with federal and state laws, regulatory bodies, codes of conduct, court orders, and consent decrees, confirming that further harm to the African-American community has ended. The county commission and city council are being asked to consider adoption of a resolution, authorizing staff to develop a scope of work that will then lead to the selection of a firm to conduct this requested audit. And then upon resolution approval, county and city staff will work with the CRC to develop a scope for the audit, select a firm, and then review and prioritize remediation opportunities. That scope of work, the audit firm selection process and review of prioritization of opportunities, will also be discussed at the monthly CRC meetings. So the immediate recommendation that was passed on December 5th, it details as such. It is recommended that the county and city provide assurance and take effective measures to end ongoing and current harms due to intentional and unintentional policies, programs, practices, and procedures. Called for that the county and city to conduct an audit to ensure compliance with federal and state laws, regulatory bodies, codes of conduct, court orders, and consent decrees. This audit will demonstrate that the cessation of harms has occurred and will prevent further harms or threats to African-Americans. It is recommended that the county and city promote and enforce codes of conduct and ethical norms and take ongoing measures to foster the following: confidence building between government and African-Americans, truth-seeking mechanisms and procedures, and of course, the timely accountability of the dispensation of these recommendations. So this draft resolution, which I believe you all have received, describes the vote taken on December 5th, approving the immediate recommendation. It summarizes the call to conduct an official audit to ensure compliance with federal and state laws, et cetera. And it also directs the county and the city staff to collaborate with the CRC to help really develop that scope and work on that formal solicitation. And of course, upon completion, commits to reviewing and prioritizing these audit findings to remediate the perpetuation of further harm. So that is what is being asked of today at the City Equity and Engagement Committee level, but also at the County Commission level. And last but not least, here is a snapshot of the timeline. So of course, on December 5th, the Community Reparations Commission adopted this immediate recommendation to stop the harm. Then, over the past month, the city and county has developed an implementation plan and drafted a resolution. On January 9th, at the last meeting, we reviewed the implementation plan, and we discussed this draft resolution with the commission. On January 17th, the County Commission and City Council Equity and Engagement Committee are both receiving this briefing and providing feedback on this draft resolution to authorize staff to work on, to work with the CRC to develop the audit scope and begin that process of selecting a firm to conduct the audit. January 24th, the City Council will consider adoption of this draft resolution. And then on February 7th, the County Commission will also consider adoption of this draft resolution. February 20th is the next Community Reparations Commission meeting, so county and city staff will review the draft scope. And then again, on March 20th, county and city staff will finalize that scope of work in collaboration with the CRC. We're looking at spring 2023 to really finalize and advertise a solicitation to select this firm to conduct the audit. And then in summer 2023, we're hoping to finalize that audit and review some of these findings and prioritize the recommendations from the audit. And of course, ongoing, we're looking at monthly updates and feedback sessions with the Community Reparations Commission to coordinate also with the impact focus areas. Our hope is that this audit will identify those discriminatory policies, programs, and practices that are happening at the city and county level. Key process components. So these definitions were added to aid in the, you know, to aid in the work and just to just provide some guardrails around what we're asking. So as far as scope of work, scope of work is a detailed description of work, milestones, and timeline that are necessary to complete the recommended audit. The solicitation is that public advertisement for vendors to review the scope of work and submit responses. The audit report itself is the detailed overview of key findings from the audit, prepared by the selected firm to include detailed recommendations on policy and operational revisions needed to ensure cessation of further harm. And then, of course, evaluation and prioritization. The county and city staff, in coordination with the CRC, are going to be reviewing these findings from the audit report to prioritize them and really just seize those opportunities to ensure the cessation of harms and the prevention of future harms. And then audit resources include the funding required to conduct the audit that would come from the previously approved county and city reparations resources. So this is the breakdown of where we've been and where we're going. Thank you to DK Wesley and her staff in helping to really coordinate this and put this together. I also will lean on our Chair and our Vice Chair to add any additional commentary. I don't know if we want to pause at this time for questions.
I do have a couple of questions. Thank you so much for the presentation. So if I'm understanding this correctly, the funding to pay for this would come from what is already allocated, which means that other potential areas would not be able to be funded because we're spending it on this particular project. Does that make sense, DK?
Yes, that's correct from what I understand, yes.
Thank you so much. And my second question is, help me understand how the audit works, what that process is. This isn't something that I'm really familiar with, so I just want to have a better understanding of what that process looks like.
So we're doing research, but we haven't found a specific audit like this being done anywhere else in the United States. We do know that there are compliance audits that happen
Right.
in different areas like, you know, American disabilities, et cetera. And so we want to work closely with the city and the commission to kind of iron out what a scope might look like. I think Dr. Mullin might have some ideas on what we could include in that scope, and we'll look to the entire commission to help us develop the scope. So high level, right? They'll look at our processes, they'll look at laws and, you know, decrees that apply to the Buncombe County, and they'll see, review our processes and our policies and see if we're in compliance or not. They will tell us whether or not we're in compliance, and then we'll come up with strategies to mitigate harm for our African-American community. Dr. Mullin, I don't know if you want to add anything specific to that? Okay.
Dr. Mullin, you'll need to come up to the microphone, please.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Dr. Mullin.
The one thing that, actually a couple of things that I would like to add is that the data, we're looking for the recommendations coming from the subgroups of the commission to be database recommendations. The data that we're using are data sources that aren't official, ranging from student papers that compose the state of Black Asheville to a variety of consultancy reports that may or may not be particularly germane to what we're studying. And so we thought that rather than the subcommittees asking for an array of data, taking a shotgun approach that we would actually hone in on the actual needs of the subcommittees using official sources of data before we offer recommendations for policy adoption. The second reason is that we thought that the difficulty of getting data from the various agencies by the various commissions was adding too much time and chaos to the process. And so we're asking for centralization.
That makes perfect sense. Thank you so much, Dr. Mullin. What happens if we don't find a consultant who does this based on what Ms. Wesley just said, that, you know, we haven't so far found anyone? What would that look like?
My, I expect that we're going to have people falling out the trees to do this, but I expect that it's going to be a topic that will gain the interest of some very reputable researchers. And the reason for that is that what we're looking at doing is, has not been done before, but I believe we are anticipating what's happening on the forefront of other reparations movements. And that rather than politics or ideology driving it, that we're looking at database solutions. And in this case, we're looking at data ranging from the policymakers within the bureaucracy to the outcomes of the policy themselves. And it's looking at housing, education, healthcare, including physical and mental health care. We're looking at economic development as well as justice, the five areas that we were designated by the city and county to look at disparities in.
Thanks so much. I think this is really interesting. I appreciate you entertaining my questions.
Oh, no, no, this is, this is, this is really exciting to me. And I think that rather than it being driven by bias, that when we look at the information sitting in front of us, it's going to be pretty evident about the areas we need to take priority in.
I guess I have one follow-up question. You know, parts of this seem like very specific and pretty narrow, like, you know, reviewing, having an audit to ensure compliance with federal and state laws, regulatory bodies, codes of conduct, court orders, consent decrees. I mean, that's a really specific kind of list of things, right? And I think we could have a group with some experience and expertise review that and see, like, are there any areas where there would be non-compliance with any of those specific lists of things? Other parts of it seem super broad, right? Like processes for truth finding. So I guess, I guess I'm, when I look at the recommendations, I'm a little unclear about, like, some of these are really particular, others are, seem very open-ended, kind of looking at, you know, kind of broader societal disparities, right? So could you just, I don't know, maybe comment a little bit more on this? Because I was just reading it, I wasn't sure if the expertise sought or the experience sought was for, you know, kind of this more narrow list of things where if we are in non-compliance, certainly, I think we would all want to know that and do something about it. Or is it this sort of deeper kind of, you know, societal look at disparity issues?
Yeah, yeah. And I guess in general, just to give you an overview of it, because it's not in the resolution itself, this is following the recommendations from, if you remember, I'm using the acronyms, NARC and COBRA. These were the two national organizations that are advocating the bill before the House of Representatives right now. And they are in compliance with the United Nations Declaration on Reparations in talking about the very first thing we need to do is stop the harm, the cessation of harm. And that's the broad, I think, feeling you're getting. And with the commission itself, with the Reparations Commission itself, there was a feeling, is a feeling of distrust. And it's more than ambivalence. There's a feeling that you put in this work, and the idea is that there are areas that are still going unaddressed. And there are immediate and ongoing concerns confronting the African-American community that are not being seen. For example, the idea of truth-telling, you know, very broad kind of catch-all kind of phrase. But our truth-telling phrase was, by many of the commissioners, estimated to be too short. And that there was a narrative of the community that needed to be spoken and articulated openly and publicly so that it's acknowledged again in our policies that may come forward. The more specific areas were where we needed more expertise in gathering data. And so they thought that, first thing, are we in compliance with official standings? And that's where the laws and court orders and consent decrees, that's where all that came in. And because that expertise was lacking at the focus area, subcommittee, I keep calling them subcommittees, but they're not subcommittees, focus areas. We have people in there that have some experiential background, but they aren't professional researchers. And so we thought that more specificity was needed in order to direct them if we were to hire an audit firm.
A question I have. When we talk about the audit, during the audit, and when we talk about truth-telling, we're talking about two different things, aren't we? Well, my question, first part of my question is, do we have any idea how long this audit would take? Will take?
No, I really don't. And the timeline that Christine Edwards just gave was an estimate. I really don't. In fact, I am concerned about it in terms of how it coordinates with the ongoing work of the subcommittee. And so what I'm asking the focus areas to do is to continue their work using whatever data are available so that when we do have official information, it's vetted, our recommendations are vetted to be whether or not they're accurate or irrelevant. In other words, I'm looking at the information coming from the audit as coming in at the middle or end of our processes. And if necessary, we need to extend the length of lifetime for the commission in order to correct any misperceptions.
How do you plan to go about the truth-telling part?
That's really, the, I don't want to call them children. The youth group that has been granted money, I think from the county, as well as some other sources, in collecting narrative has been one of the ways in which the community has expressed interest in participating. In other words, gathering together to tell stories and together experiences of the individuals who were involved with the aspects of the committee's subject research areas. Let me give you an example. We've had people show up at the commission meetings who wanted to talk about what happened with their family during urban renewal because they felt that no one knew and they needed to be told. And we didn't have a mechanism for that. Another has been, we had a student group show up to talk about their experiences in the public school systems. And that kind of narrative, I think, adds something other than the cold hard facts of numbers. But it's just as important for our factual understanding of what policies we should develop.
Can I follow up on that too, then? But isn't, is an auditing process really the best way to get at those kinds of concerns? I mean, I think they're really substantive and really valid, but they seem like such different things.
They are.
And so I just, I kind of, I kind of wonder if this idea of like, hey, let's do an audit for compliance, you know, might, you know, yield some interesting information. And then this other process around, like, kind of getting data, looking at, like, what's really happened here in our community so we have the facts, things like that. They just, they seem like really different processes, and maybe there'd be really different kinds of, like, people or organizations that might be needed to track down one set, answer one set of questions versus some of these things that are really like a part of Asheville's history and our community and that kind of fact-finding process, which might not have anything to do with whether we're complying with current, you know, regulations or something like that, but it's about our history and what we want to do with it.
Right.
So it's both in, because you need both. You know what I mean? You can't, like, we want the stories. And yeah, we have youth groups and there's other organizations. You got RJC that's collecting a lot of data and surveys and different things like that that's supporting the work. But we also, the commission is really interested in looking at what our city and county's role is in the perpetuation of the harms and how we can work with our city and county to stop the harm. And so the audit is going to give us the data. One thing is trust is a thing. And when you ask potential perpetrators, like, I have to be intentional, of harms for data, and even if the county gave us everything or the city gave us everything that we requested as far as data, the trust of those numbers or the data that's being received is always going to be a question. And so it's like, this is a way to get a third party to come in and get us the data that we've been requesting at this point for months and be able to give us some concrete data that we can utilize to support what we already assume is the reality based on the reality of today, but have the facts to back it up. And so it's both in, you need the stories and you need the data. So the audit is super important. And it's not just on the compliance, how it's been limited a little bit in the resolution, but it's also the financial, because the financial impacts are real to the Black community. And so we also want to look at both, it's both in, to answer that question.
Nice, good question, or I guess kind of a statement and then a question based on what you're going to do with that data. If we took something that, very specific, that Chair Newman mentioned, for example, court orders or current local rules, and we found something that was antiquated or some old rule that we're applying, I imagine that would be where some of the storytelling and people's present experience might intersect with our audit, to the extent that we could change something specific that's done a specific harm to a group of people disproportionately in our community. Some of that doesn't fall within the strictly county or city range? Is some of that data going to be shared with our court actors, the people who are implicated in this by the harm that you're discussing, but might not otherwise be a part of this process that we're doing through reparations?
Yes. So this process is not just limited to, like, we want the audit from the city and county, yes, definitely. But we are in all of our focus areas, looking at those other partners from Dogwood Health to different other bodies of people, the courts and criminal justice and different things like that, and bringing them to the table to be a part of these conversations. Like, it's not just going to be the Reparations Commission and the focus areas that's really going to influence the change. It's going to be all of us being able to sit down and look at this data and understand to each respective area what the impacts look like and whether good or bad. You know what I mean? We just want to be able to have that conversation based on facts.
Commissioner, let me add to it, is that I think you're hitting on a major issue that has not come up before on the commission's agenda. We've just not had time to discuss it. Is that a good part of the harm of the African-American community did not come through government. It came through the private sector. And so the idea of the role of the private sector is yet to be researched completely. And let me give you an example, that neither, the government is not responsible for mortgage loans. And the idea of homeownership is a key factor in the resolutions passed by the city and county. We need that information. If we, if it is indicated that there has been non-compliance with nondiscriminatory measures, then we start talking about other recommendations to be made. And I think, Chairman, you were absolutely right. The nature of the data require two different types of ways of digging it up. We have professional researchers that are designed to, and I think trained to, go through archives and government and as well as, what is it called, economic reports. But there's another type of researcher that is, and I hate to use the term "soft research", but that type of research, which is much more ethnographically based, is the kind of research that I think a second source is needed for. But who that might be and how we might go about it is a different, is a different type of search, I think.
Would it be fair to say that one way to think about this would be Phase 1 would be this audit that focuses on the question of compliance with federal and state laws, regulatory bodies, codes of conduct, et cetera? Sort of a more technical, legalistic assessment that will determine whether there's any non-compliance that's currently ongoing? That that might be Phase 1 of this? And that Phase 2 is a much broader, but critically important, look at, under the focus areas that we're looking at? We know there are well-documented disparities that exist. And this Phase 2 would be identifying whether there are active city and county or past or present policies or programs, et cetera, practices that contributed to those disparities? Is that what, and that would include both quantitative and qualitative research tools? Is that a fair description of what you all are looking for?
Commissioner, I think it is. And in addition, it is my hope, from the qualitative research that is done, that when people are questioned directly, when the narrative is looked at, they often have ideas about how they can best be satisfied. And I think that that's going to be a very rich source of recommendations for the commission.
Understood.
And I'll add one thing there, because I think that's a good sort of clarification, Commissioner. The Phase 1 and Phase 2, I do think the idea here is data, you know, this quantitative and qualitative data, but at the same time, the desire to really launch this and seek those immediate recommendations, right? Immediate cessation of harm, which first starts with identifying those harms and then how they connect back to the recommendations. I do also just want to reiterate that, and I think this has been stated before, but the work of the impact focus area work groups are still going to continue to happen throughout 2023. So this audit that's going to be going on concurrently can also help to inform the work of the IFAs and to really strengthen the recommendations that they're coming out with and then just really confirm those. And it also provides an opportunity to immediately put resources back into the Buncombe County community around stopping the harm for Black residents of Buncombe County.
Thank you, that's helpful. For me, at least, that phased approach helps me kind of get my head around this a bit more. And I certainly understand where the commission's coming from in the sense that if with one hand, we're describing and looking at an active disparity that we know about, but we're not addressing a longstanding practice, whether it originates in the city, the county, or the courts, that is perpetuating that harm, it's going to be hard to move forward from a basis, not just of trust, but also of efficacy and impact. And I think we certainly want to be aware of and understand if there's any active county, or not just active, but historical, but certainly active also, county policies or practices that are causing the very harm that we're trying to address. That certainly follows for me, and I understand where that's coming from. Thanks.
One other component is that we're asking for timely reports and regular reports. One other component is that we're asking for timely reports and regular reports from this process on the data that is found. And the reason, one of the reasons is not just because we're not wanting the surprise at the end. It's also the involvement of our body that's been appointed by the city and county and the communities. But also to keep you all informed, one of the difficulties of doing this work is the emotional toll it takes on the people who are actually doing it. It's, it's this difficult work. Knowing that you all, as commissioners and in the city council, are consistently updated and, and involved with our step by step evolution of this undone process, this is unprecedented process. It really does make a difference with us. It really, it truly does make a difference. I appreciate it.
Other questions? Just one, one other question I have on this is that is to the extent that, so we're talking about references like ongoing harm, things that could be done right now, policy changes that could be made right now to reduce harm or address harm. And again, if there's things that can be done, of course, I think we'd all want to hear those. But in terms of this, if a, if a firm were hired to pursue this, is it, is it your intention that it is kind of this look at the present day, like what's happening right now? As opposed to, let's look at our history and, and kind of, you know, which a lot of the whole reparations process about is kind of look, is like making this decision that we are going to look back on our history and understand where we've been coming from, what's happened. All that is, is part of our present, right? But it is, it is like by its nature, kind of a reflective process, right? So, but if a firm were hired to do this, do you want them to kind of engage in that historical analysis? Or is it much more of kind of like a, let's look at what's happening right now? Not do that important work of looking at our legacy, look at our past to understand what it means for where we go forward?
Now that, oh God, I don't know. You know, we do this work, you skip over parts that are so significant. Is that we are so opposite of just about every other reparations movement that we know of. Is that they've started from the beginning and working their way forward. They're, they're beginning with enslavement and working their way through segregation, as well as the lynching era, et cetera. What we are doing is starting with the present day. And we're looking at what is going on with the creation of and perpetuation of disparities and current policies, public policies that have been funded through public agencies. And so we're starting at the end. And we're working our way into the history that we have not yet mapped out. We have not had a single discussion on the era of segregation or, or enslavement. And I suspect that that's going to come very much at the end as people begin to ask, how do we get here? But first, we're investigating here, right now, the present, and that's what we meet the firm for.
And but you would not be looking for this group to be involved in kind of that historical, look backwards, look at the city and county's history? It's just this sort of contemporary analysis?
That's right, that's right.
The one other question I had was, is there anything else you could share with the commission this afternoon about? You know, there's been expressed that you've had difficulty getting data, getting information. Is there anything else, just, I mean, so I think this request is partly coming out of that. But is there anything else you can tell us just about difficulty in terms of getting information? Because I think obviously everyone wants to make sure, you know, you can get the information that you need to go through a process to look at the issues, make recommendations. So just anything else you would share with us around how that's been a challenge or any thoughts about what is needed to make sure you can get good information, good facts to help you carry out your, your work?
So we have had presentations as we've requested different people to come and speak, so our different focus area groups and to the full commission. We have gotten news earlier today that we should be having, getting some of the data that we've been requesting later this week. And so it's just been slow and then like, and health, a lot of the data that they're requesting, the historical data and current data that they're requesting is just not there, it just wasn't kept. There wasn't, it wasn't segregated by race. We couldn't pull out the things that they were trying to pull out. And so in some areas, it's just not there, it's just not able to get that type of data, you know what I mean? And so it's, it's been a, a lot of different reasons for getting the data. So it's, it's not just one thing, it's been a couple of different reasons why we haven't had data over this, these months of requesting it. But I think she could speak, Christine could speak more to that.
Sure. I will also say, you know, to the credit of the city and county staff, they have been really instrumental in setting up a process for collecting that data. And really, it's, it's iterative. So it's submitting the data requests in a formal manner, working with both the city and county strategy and data teams to identify those specific requests and getting clarity, right? Getting clarity on what questions are being asked and just really drilling down. So we actually have a process in place. The last time that we updated the full commission on the, the status of the data was in November, I believe. And I think there are 68 individual requests that were broken down by IFA. And over the course of the past 30 to 60 days, they are slowly being fulfilled. And so it's just a matter of closing that communication loop and just making sure that those fulfilled requests are getting back to the IFAs and getting back to the full commission. So there is a process in place. It's not a perfect process. But Ms. Little is correct in saying that there's a lot of information out there that's being requested that is just not available at the public information level, like as a public record, you know? And so when the city and the county government have request for a public record that's not available, that goes into a research category. And then that goes into the question of, okay, who's going to do this research? So that's what we're dealing with now.
And, and does the, does the commission process like have the, I appreciate, you know, mentioning the city and county staff have been working hard on this. But are there the resources there, like to just do some of these research pieces that you're talking about? Like, do we have the resources we need to just, you know, do, I mean, and we can't, you know, answer all questions that might come up? I mean, you know, we all have only so many hours in the day. But for, for some of these questions that are high priorities, like are there the, do you all feel like we have the resources in place to be able to just do some of that work and, and be able to dig into some of these things that may not be, as was just mentioned, sort of readily available in existing public sources?
Just speaking from experience in researching these areas, what I have found is that the public record is limited. And it depends on which area you're looking at. Healthcare, for example, we did not keep accurate records by race and by gender until almost the Obama, the Obama administration. It's, it, you, you would find designations that were pretty useless for now. You would see non-white and white, for example. But for other areas, we're looking at information that's held by the state. And it's because it, it, it might be held locally, it might not. So physically locating it becomes an issue. And who would do that and whose job it would be to do that? Another issue that, that, that makes it very difficult is that once you get past the initial questions and begin asking the second level of questions, in an area of Asheville, Buncombe County, it's small, we start talking about people indicting themselves for their own jobs. And that's, that's an unreasonable expectation for people to give information that's almost incriminating. Because people have been on the job for a long time. And now we're asking questions about the quality of that job and, and, and reasons for the continued disparities and outcomes. It's almost unfair asking people to ask, to, to get that information. So a third party auditor is why, is, is driving the, the trust factor. I don't think it's because we lack the personnel, but at certain levels, we may lack the will.
Okay, I have one last question. The, although I've always noticed I sometimes say, this is my last question, and then I think of something else. But so, last question on my, on my mind right now. So Dr. Mullin, you mentioned that the commission's kind of starting with the present and then intends to sort of then go backwards from there rather than starting, you know, deep in history and working forward. I'm just curious, the, has the commission, so from that, I'm assuming the commission therefore has not spent time yet looking at the issues around urban renewal in Asheville and Buncombe County? Or has that, has that been a subject that has started to be discussed and looked at? Or if it hasn't, then is that planned to? Or just could you give an update on that piece? Because I think, I think just as we've all kind of gone through this discussion around reparations, there's so many different issues that emerge from that. But I think one of them that has always been significant is like, you know, this is an area where, you know, local government played a really direct role, you know? And, and, and so it's one of those areas where, you know, if we can think about, hey, let's try to heal from things that local government has had a really direct hand in. It's just an area that, that's, has always been of interest, I know, the commission and the community. So is it something that's been discussed at this time?
Yeah, yeah. And, and actually, you know, if I've misspoke, I apologize. And, and suggesting that there's no history involved. With certain areas, we can't help but go into history. And honestly, I question whether it's history, the way living memory in the commission has been working. It's almost for many people as if this happened yesterday. But I'm, so I'm talking about urban renewal. And in talking about urban renewal, we go deep into the 1920s with redlining. And so in a way, we are looking at history. But also we're looking at the current impact of those urban renewal policies and what could be possibly done about it. For healthcare, it, 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 it goes back, it's history in terms of current, currency. We've had some, one touch around the edges of the era that ended sterilization. And the commitment of the local systems to offer integrated medical offerings across racial lines. And that's fairly recent. That's, that's again, within living memory, the 1970s. And so the idea of not dealing with history kind of depends on what area we're looking at. But it also, in terms of the accuracy of the data, are dependent on narrative as well as, I shouldn't call it narrative, the qualitative and the quantitative aspects of it. Urban renewal is one of the more sensitive topics in the, in the commission.
Yeah, in every group, actually.
Yeah.
All right, well, Commissioners, any other questions at this time? All right, thank you both for serving on the commission and for being with us this afternoon to help answer some questions and share some more perspectives on it. DK, anything else from the staff this time?
We're not requesting any specific action today. We'll bring forth the resolution to the, on the February 7th board for your consideration. And the resolution is specifically asking you all to authorize staff to work with the commission and the city to develop a scope.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, let me ask you something to make sure I'm right. I keep hearing, you know, talk about finances. But now let me make sure I'm right. You're sitting there with a pot of money, $4.1 million, right? And that's the most in the six years that I've been on the commission, folks, is that we have given to any initiative. And that's why I want to make sure that the people on the reparations commission realize that we are talking, we have put our money up, up front. And we assure commissions to come, we hope they will, will continue what we've started. But I hope everybody realizes we can't guarantee anything for future commissions.
Yes, the first immediate recommendation was that you all resolved to include it in the baseline budget and also increase it. I think we ended with a 2% increase on an annual basis. So in the county's budget, we have $2 million currently with a commitment to, as long as this body includes it in the baseline budget and, and an increase. So yes, we intend to utilize the current funding that we have for any recommendations that come forward from the commission.
All right, thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is the update on the Affordable Parking for Downtown Workers Initiative. And Tim Love's here to help us out with that issue.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. All right, good afternoon, Commissioners. Got a brief presentation this afternoon related to the Affordable Parking Program. Meant to just be a quick update, just to give you a sense of where we are in the program since we last spoke. So in terms of our agenda today, quick background for members of the public. We'll talk about the program overview, current status, and then next steps. So in terms of background, on November 1st, Commissioners directed staff to implement the Affordable Parking Program at the Cox Avenue deck. So just, you know, the county owns two decks, this is specifically focused on Cox Avenue. A goal of that program was to offer this program to low to moderate income employees of downtown Asheville businesses. On December 13th, right at the end of the calendar year, the application window opened. And so we asked people to begin submitting applications into the program. To do that, we leveraged, of course, our communications department here, Cape, but also networks of folks that interact with employees of downtown businesses. So, you know, the Downtown Association, Restaurant Association, folks like that. Our application window closed on, on January 13th, which is what we always said that the, the window would be, about three to four weeks to let folks apply. As we get towards the end, we're, we're going to request to extend that application window just a little bit further, just to go ahead and max out the program. But that was our deadline that we had originally established. When we launched the program, created a website that's on the county's webpage. Just a couple snippets here so you can get a sense of what it looked like. On the left, that's the homepage when you land, how you can get there through banners, QR codes. There's a QR code on the right, as you can see. And then, you know, just tried to be very simple in how we presented this information, not a whole lot of screens to click through. But here you can see on the left, the eligibility rules that are available. So how are you eligible? And it's pretty simple. You know, do you work in and around downtown Asheville? Are you at 80% AMI or area median income? Do you have a valid driver's license? Do you have a way to pay for this electronically? And then are you above the age of 18? So those are the requirements, pretty basic stuff. Additionally, we gave folks multiple options to submit their applications. Our preference, of course, is to do this online. So there's a button there to start your application. However, if you were unable to do that, you could also call, and we had information there, call or email. So we gave folks multiple means to submit their applications. Any questions on kind of what this looks like, how you get there, eligibility? Just to rehash, I know we've talked about this, but just so we're on the same page. The program overview, no changes since we spoke last, but just to reiterate, looking at reduced rate monthly parking for eligible individuals. To be eligible, we've kind of talked about that. You know, around downtown, 80% AMI, no restrictions on industry. So, you know, it doesn't matter who you work for, you're eligible. Reduced rate was $40 a month, which was a reduction from the $85 a month that it was prior to the program. Location, again, Cox Avenue. And then the lottery process was established as having 150 applications available. And so that's where, that's where we're at today. So just to reiterate how we got here. So in terms of where we are, current status, the Cox Avenue program status, we've had, I've got some slightly revised numbers actually for you since the time that we presented this. But we've had over 2,000 folks visit the program website. Of those, a little over 237 began the process of completing an application. And of which, 109 of those were eligible. And so this is data based on the time we published last week. I can tell you that since we've published, we've had additional eligible applicants come through. And our number is closer to 135 folks that are eligible for the program. Which means we have approximately 20 to 30 spots remaining. We just updated those numbers today as we got the latest and we'll publish that. But that's, in general, where we're at. So we've seen great interest in the program. We've almost maxed out the number of slots that were initially made available. But because we haven't fully maxed out, our recommendation is to continue to open that window to go ahead and max out interest in the program. And so that's what we'll proceed with moving forward. Any, any questions on that?
And so at this point, with the remaining spots, it'll just be a first come, first served basis? Or how do you plan to do it?
I, I think what we'll, what we'll do, and we'll, we'll meet on it internally. I, I think we want to set kind of a window. That way we give folks, you know, similarly into the beginning, like rather than a first come, first served, let's give people a window so that everyone can get in that has an interest. This does two things for us. We think it's more equitable, but on the backend, it also gives us an opportunity to create a waitlist. That way we can filter through folks in case, you know, folks aren't interested in the spots or they canceled their spots or we're unable to get in touch with them, any number of reasons. Thank you. Thank you. Great.
Good news.
Yep. And, you know, we will be back to talk more in the future, in particular on our next steps. So, you know, with Cox Avenue, we will begin notifying applicants very soon that, hey, you're eligible, here are the next steps. That communication will all happen through Preferred Parking, who is ultimately the entity that will be taking funding from these applicants, and so we want them to be the direct point of contact. We'll reopen and advertise the remaining spots just so everyone knows what's going on. As we move to College Street, a slightly different approach, and we've talked about this all along, that there was a need to look at College Street as well, but that the needs of College Street are slightly different, in particular with the more frequent use of the courthouse and just utilization in general, to be honest. So what we're recommending doing is a similar approach to, to Cox Avenue where we survey our applicants, or not our applicants, but survey the public to get a sense of demand. So we know how many spots there may be interest in. We think the demand may be less because Cox is pretty centrally located compared to College Street. That doesn't mean there won't be interest in College Street, we just want to quantify it a little bit. So we'll do a very brief survey, figure out what the demand is, analyze our utilization data, and then open up a program very similar to what we've done. Would go ahead and signal that we do envision, we're not going to have the ability to offer 150 spots. That doesn't seem attainable, seems like it'll be a much smaller number. We'll bring that number back to y'all before we launch the program, but I just wanted to begin to, to level set. And again, you know, the big reason for that, as we think about the College Street deck utilization through the court, much different, a lot more daily users than we have down at Cox Avenue. But additionally, we also have a number of state employees that use the deck on a recurring basis, and so they've, they've got spots that they've already allocated. So it, it shrinks the population a little bit. So with that said, that's all I have. Welcome to take any questions, but we do envision being back before the commission, either second meeting in February or first in March, just depending on our survey window.
You know, do most state employees actually have parking over there? That was not the case when I worked over there.
I can't speak to, you know, definitively the number of total employees versus how many have a spot, but the number of state employees that do have a spot is somewhere in the hundreds. And I'll, I'll bring firm data back. I, I just don't have the number in my head right now.
Thank you. Great, any questions, commissioners? All right, well, great, great update. Thanks again to all the staff who worked on this, kind of took this idea and really brought an open mind to it and helped to kind of bring it forward. We've heard so much positive feedback from the community on this, so I think it's really appreciated, it's encouraging to hear that it's going to be, you know, looks like, looks like it'll be really optimally utilized. And I appreciate opening up, even, even if the College Street is a much smaller, you know, number initially, I think it's great to have a second site too for people who work in different parts of downtown. That might, that will work better for some folks. So, so appreciate that and look forward to, you know, once we've had it in place for a while, kind of seeing how these new downtown worker parking, you know, utilization affects the overall utilization and what kind of future opportunities there might be as we learn, learn more about how it all syncs up.
That's great. Thank you all.
All right, thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
All right, we do have a minute before we need to go to our closed session. It is kind of warm in here. I don't know if anybody can crack a window or something. The Jasmine's super happy. She's still a little, a little five degrees hotter would be even better, but it's very good. Okay, sorry Jasmine, you're outvoted. It's too hot. It's too hot. Yes. All right, so let's talk for a moment about the, we received a request from the county schools regarding, they've adopted a resolution encouraging the legislature to give more local control for scheduling the school year calendar. So, and they requested that we consider that, so I just wanted to have a brief discussion about that on the commission and see if that's of interest. So I guess I'll just kind of open it up for any comments or questions on that. I would envision, I, I think I read it, it just puts them on par with what charter schools and private schools are already doing, so just giving them that same flexibility seems fair.
I'm supportive. I mean, they, they've detailed that very clearly, all the reasons that it's impacting them in a, in a negative way with their student learning and the way it sets up for the semester. So I'm definitely supportive of doing, I guess they're asking us to adopt a similar resolution in support of this.
Yeah, I'm supportive as well. I mean, you know, from a perspective of parent, spouse of a, a school principal, the, the schools and our educational experts deserve the ability to determine the best calendar for our students, not, you know, a, a body of elected officials in Raleigh. One thing that also doesn't align, and I appreciate, you know, that we are looking at this through that lens of the educational component of coursework, but the North Carolina High School Athletic Association does not alter the sports calendar to meet the late start dates. So our kids who are fall athletes and in band are already going back in August, and, you know, those sporting events, band events are already starting before school has ever started too. So I mean, effectively, where our schools don't have that calendar flexibility to determine what's best for them, I mean, the tourism industry is what was driving this so many years ago. Effectively, tourism stops in August 1 anyway. So I feel like that argument isn't incredibly valid as a reason any longer, but so many other pieces of our schools don't align with just that.
And I'm surprised we didn't get this from both school systems, because the eight years I spent on the city school board, this was always a problem. Yeah, it was a mess. And even from a school board member and a parent, when my daughters, you know, were in school, it was always a mess, the way these calendars are, and really, they're more, they're geared more for eastern North Carolina than they are for those of us up here in the hills. That was always my complaint. But, yeah, I agree with, I think we need to support them.
I think that's a great point, Commissioner Whitesides, and I would not be surprised if our other school district brings this forward to us as well in the next couple of weeks.
They don't ask us to weigh in on policy a whole lot, so reason not to.
Yeah.
I feel strongly this should be controlled from Raleigh. I'm kidding. The, no, just, I've just, can anybody, it sounds like there's a lot of support for this. Is anybody aware of sort of what the counterargument is on this? I mean, this is just not a policy issue. I've, I've spent much time on, so what is the, what just, what is, for sake of discussion, what's the other side of the argument on this? Just consistency across the state or what?
I'd wager the answer would be there's 100 counties and, kind of, that's my guess, but I don't know.
Don't want everybody doing their own thing?
Everybody doing their own thing going, but there's thousands of charter schools.
And, and they're still all required to have the same number of hours of classroom instruction. It's just a question of like, when exactly it occurs, right? I mean, so they're still mandated by the state to have the same hours of instruction, just some flexibility in which the start dates and end dates, and I guess some holidays and stuff like that, is that right? And, and if, and if we, if they were granted that, is it y'all's understanding that they would seek to have like the first semester in before Christmas as opposed to it kind of spilling over to a few days after when everyone's gone on vacation and then, then do testing when you get back? That's one of the main reasons they want to do this?
Correct. Also, they specifically note, I think, December 12th, just recently, 2022, the North Carolina House Select Committee on Education System for North Carolina's Future issued its finding that the current school calendar law is not best suited to the needs of the students and educators, and that local boards of education should be given greater calendar flexibility. And this committee recommends that the General Assembly take action and change the school calendar.
So it sounds like there's a consensus on this. I, I don't have the resolution in front of me. I mean, we could place this on the, if, if, if we're all of the same mind in terms of supporting, we could place this on the agenda for tonight or our next meeting. It could even go on the consent agenda for passage if it's, if it's clear that there's consensus on this. But we would need to format it. I mean, they passed a resolution, but we would need to put it into a format for our own adoption. So maybe we should just schedule it for our next meeting to make sure we have time to do that. Is that agreeable to everyone?
Right.
All right, well, great. Well, we'll do that and we'll, we can all reply back to the schools and just let them know, we, we plan to do this and we expect it to be on the consent agenda at our next meeting. All right, very good. And of course, we're meeting with our legislators later this month.
Right.
So maybe we will, we will not have a, we will not have a formally adopted it yet, but maybe just for the presentations we're preparing that day, if we could just make sure this is included on our list with a, and we'll just clarify, we haven't voted on it yet, but we did have a discussion and it's clearly a consensus item, so we'll kind of assume it's going to be part of the legislative, one of the legislative issues that we support. All right, commissioners, thanks. We want to have a closed session to discuss a personnel matter. Mr. Free, could you tell us the authorization to do that?
There's a, notice a special meeting for to call a closed session pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 11A6 to discuss personnel matter. Don't anticipate anything but direction from the board, no action to be taken once you come back.
Thank you. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, we will return from closed session to this room to adjourn back into open session. Or do we need to do that? Or do I need to, do we need to actually adjourn this meeting now and this is actually a separate meeting? Or do we need to come back in here to adjourn from the closed session? We should come back out and adjourn the closed session. And then do we also then adjourn this meeting or? Okay, so this meeting is just over. Okay, great. All right, thank you.